I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for March 28th. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein, councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Seven members present. You have a quorum of the committee.
Thank you. With that, we have the minutes for March 14th. Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the minutes for March 14th, 2022.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that would like to address the council, this is the time to come forward. If you would come up to the podium, if you'd give us your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Randy Deikeis, 418 North Sycamore, Lansing. And I'm here once again, not the first time, and probably won't be the last. But you're being asked to approve the reappointment of David Price to yet another term on BWL Board of Commissioners. In his application packet, you see what looks like an outstanding resume, and it is. He's got a long list of qualifications that might show him to be an outstanding choice. While his resume is lengthy with much admirable public service for which he is to be commended, I submit that none of that qualifies him for another term on the BWL Board. In fact, since Price's total initial appointment in 2011, 11 years ago, the Board has demonstrated a remarkable lack of curiosity about management's action and has steadfastly refused to look into possible misconduct at BWL. During Price's tenure, the Board has consistently declined to hold management accountable for malfeasance, deciding instead to act as shills and sycophants for whatever management wants. BWL has a long history of ignoring problems and potential illegal activities until pushed to fix things by outside organizations. In 2017, it was the Sierra Club that forced BWL to comply with the Clean Air Act and begin the transition to renewable energy. It was not the Board. Now, we are in the midst of another public health crisis, and once again, the Board is refusing to hold management accountable. Rather than launching a serious investigation after recent communication from the EPA and meticulous reporting in The City Pulse about groundwater contamination and failing and the failure to conduct required testing and elevated boron levels in nearby wells, not to mention potential threats to city water supplies, the Board settles for a few puffball questions. Instead of bringing in outside experts who could shed light on the situation, the Board, under Price's leadership, believes all that is told by management. Furthermore, it was breathtaking to hear at the February Committee of the Whole meeting, one of Price's fellow commissioners called the Board a dictatorship under his leadership. It's time to stop the dictatorship on the BWL Board. It's time to have commissioners who will take seriously the Board's responsibility to protect public health and hold management accountable. An appointment to any Board or Commission ought not to be a lifetime appointment. Yet, that is how you treat it. If any Board or Commission member wishes to serve another term, they are welcomed back with open arms. That needs to stop. You need to adopt a higher standard. 11 years as a Commissioner is long enough. Lansing is a diverse community with many voices that ought to be heard as members of the BWL Board of Commissioners. It's up to you to make that happen. I implore you to use your confirmation power to vote no on this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment. The first item that we have before us is a resolution on the condemnation of Russian invasion of Ukraine. And I will turn that over to Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move the resolution before us, which enumerates the aggression from Russia against the people in the country of Ukraine and resolves that the City Council hereby strongly condemns the Russian invasion of Ukraine, denounces Vladimir Putin's year-long aggression against the sovereign country, and expressly supports Ukraine and the Ukrainian people. Further resolving, the Lansing City Council supports and encourages all efforts by the United States Administration federally, statewide, and locally to continue to impose sanctions upon Russia. And finally resolves that the Lansing City Clerk is directed to transmit copies of this resolution to President Biden and all the Michigan congressional members. I did move the resolution, but turn it over.
We have a -- thank you, Councilmember Spatafor. We have a motion on the resolution. Would anyone like to address this? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Even though symbolic, I will support this. We all pretty much watch. I know I've been very glued to the TV since it started, and it's horrible what we see and what we know is happening. And I can't even imagine having to make some of the decisions that those families make in Ukraine. Staying the fight is one thing all the guys have to do, and then the people, other people try to flee or do whatever they can, and it's scary, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution for the reappointment of David Price, an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light, for a term that will expire June 30th, 2026. Mr. Price is in the audience. If he could come up to the table. And, Mr. Price, if you could make sure that the green light -- good, we're on -- we're good. Yep. All right. This is an opportunity for council. We do have the application in front of us. Some of us on council have worked with Mr. Price over the years. Some of us are new on council and have not had that opportunity. So, we do have him here before us. So what we will do is ask Mr. Price to give us a few comments, and then we'll open it up for questions from the council members.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. First of all, I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Shore, for my reappointment, his confidence in me to continue on the Board of Water and Light. As we go forward into making the Board of Water and Light the utility of the future, there's a couple of things that I hope will be on our agenda, that I know will be on our agenda in the near future. The first thing I think of, we have to recognize Board of Water and Light has 100,000 electric, almost 100,000 electric customers. And as a Commissioner, my first concern is affordability for those customers. We all know what the pandemic did to our citizens and those in the Lansing region. I commend the Board of Water and Light for working with our customers who got behind in their payments, for actually holding resource fares to help people in the community to reach out and find opportunities for payment of their bills. And I think we have to make sure that the rates that we propose and pass as Commissioners are affordable rates for all our customers. That being said, another part of affordability that I have talked with General Manager Pefley about and other Commissioners is on-bill financing. As we move more toward solar panels and solar in the homes, as we want customers to be more efficient, the issue of funding those improvements is a huge issue for a lot of people. If -- and there are other utilities, municipally-owned utilities in the state that have been at this for a couple of years, and we're looking to them, Holland is one, Traverse City is another, where those improvements can be financed on their bill at a very low interest rate or in maybe some cases, no interest rate. So those are two of the aspects, rates and on-bill financing, that'll help in the areas of affordability. Reliability, in addition to the 100,000 electric customers, we have 60,000 water customers. And believe it or not, and I don't think it surprises anybody, our infrastructure in water is an antique in many places. Fortunately, we don't have any wood pipes anymore, but in the summertime or in the wintertime, it's not unusual to have multiple pipe breaks and water shut-offs. BWL has made a commitment beginning next year to replace what normally would have been one mile of pipe a year to eight miles of pipe a year. This will be additional jobs for union labor at the BWL, and we're excited about that, and that will increase the reliability of our water supply. Also for reliability, and this is an issue that I know people don't like to talk about, and that's tree trimming. But if you look at what we've done over the last five years, and this was something after the ice storm that some people may not remember, we got blasted on multiple reports about lack of tree trimming, and that was a major contributing factor to the outages that occurred during the ice storm. So we are up to our schedule. We'll continue now to our next five-year schedule. I know sometimes customers are annoyed when their tree doesn't look as pretty as it once did, but that's the reality of it. And if you look around us, when there's a major storm that goes through Michigan, look to the east, look to the west, and see what our competitors are dealing with, and then look at how many outages are the result of downed power lines from trees in the Lansing area. So you see that that is, in fact, paying off. Sustainability. Sustainability comes into a number of factors. The first one being our coal-fired plant, which we originally looked to 2025 to shut down. We're now looking at the end of this year to be out of the coal business, and I think that's a huge, huge win for the general Lansing area. Also, we have committed to be carbon neutral by 2040. That means I don't necessarily know how we're going to get there. I don't necessarily know that management knows how to get there, but that's a commitment that we will not back off. That'll be a combination of things like certainly renewable energy. It'll mean battery storage, which isn't where we need it to be yet, but sometime in the future it will be. It could mean carbon capture. So, but by 2040, the BWL will be carbon neutral. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and this, I think, is probably in everybody's mind, is BWL is a huge part of economic development in this region, as we saw with the new GM battery plant. BWL was at the table with the governor, with the mayor, with the economic development people, and with General Motors, and was able to come up with a package to power that battery plant to the point where GM brought it here. And not only does that mean the jobs, the new jobs going into the battery plant, but it also means saving existing jobs at Grand River and Delta. So I think BWL will continue to be an economic driver in this region, and I think you're going to see even more manufacturing coming in as a result of the new battery plant. So I look forward to taking these ideas, discussing these ideas with my fellow Board members, with the management of BWL, and I look forward to your vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Are there any questions from the council members? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for being here. And for anybody that doesn't know Mr. Price, he does a very great job with keeping the community informed, and when people have questions about Board Water and Light, he's usually the first person to answer it if he sees it, and I appreciate that, especially, you know, you being in the fourth ward where I represent, so thank you for that. But you know, this, I'm pretty much equal opportunity when it comes to the Commissioners for reappointment now, and just a few questions. Do you guys talk about stranded assets? Do you know what it is, and do you talk about it? Has it been a discussion for any of the new bills or plans coming in?
Certainly, because one of the things that we consider when you're building a new plant is what is the life expectancy of that plant, and is it -- will it -- will new technology actually come in and make that plant a stranded asset? Given what we have now, I don't see that as being an issue.
Well, you mentioned that Board Water and Light plans would be carbon neutral by 2040.
Correct.
And wouldn't the not even finished natural gas plant take away from that carbon neutrality, and it's expected to live longer than 2040?
Well, the gas plant, the Delta plant, is finished and is running, and that life expectancy is 15 to 20 years. So in 15 years, it'll be capitalized and certainly not necessarily available. Now, that being said, when we talk about carbon neutrality, that doesn't necessarily mean fossil fuels are not, couldn't still be in the mix if there are offsets and other things that contribute to carbon neutrality. Carbon neutrality doesn't mean 100% renewable.
And just for my information, so one of the conversations in the past with Board members was maybe people didn't have certain experiences or expertise. What type of continuing education do you and the Board go through to stay up to date on these issues?
I read all the time. I have attended American Public Power Association conferences and meetings, as my fellow Board members do as well. People bring a lot of different skills to the table. I think the wisdom of the Charter is that there are no prequalifications for being a Board member. People come in and they bring the skills that they have, their ability to digest information, their ability to process, their ability to discuss, their ability to listen. All those things are critical to being a Board member.
Sure, and that's true. I know people don't necessarily have the experience and expertise, but that's why I asked about continuing education, and I appreciate that you stay up to date, and I wondered if your Board does as well.
I'm aware that they do.
Is it mandatory?
It's strongly recommended in our rules of procedure.
And you mentioned tree trimming, and normally I'll leave this alone, except I get so many complaints. So you mentioned it, and I guess for the people out there, isn't it true that, for one, that the tree trimming, how it is, this last cycle is due to lack of maintenance and tree trimming from previous years?
There's no question about that, and we were cited on that at the ice storm, which is, was now in 2014, so we're talking eight years ago. We are on five-year cycles for tree trimming, and we are on our second five, completing our second five-year cycle as we are now. Tree trimming is always going to be a problematic issue. Google it, and you will see across the globe, well, I'll say not the globe, but for certain across the United States, people are unhappy about the way their trees look. But unless or until we're able to bury the lines, and that is so ridiculously expensive and presents additional problems when there's outages in terms of finding the outage, we're going to continue to trim the trees. And as they say, the proof of the pudding is that we don't have the outages as a result of that, so.
And I guess last area, so do you have any, like, issue for people that are outspoken about, you know, whether it's renewable energy or anti-Board Water and Light things? Board Water and Light, like, dealings to the point where, I don't know, do you think, like, various opinions is a problem?
Not to me. I'm open to all opinions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Mr. Price, thanks for coming here tonight. I want to echo some of the compliments that Councilmember Jackson pushed your, put your way in terms of your responsiveness and your knowledgeability on the issues. I have a couple of questions for you. You talked about affordability and on-bill financing and things like that. Is the Board looking at more robot -- this is not, I, this maybe is a question for our next joint meeting, but to put it in your head, when we talk about net metering and trying to reduce our communities' reliance on fossil fuels and nonrenewables, is the Board looking at maybe a little bit more aggressive ways to get folks to do their own power production?
I think the Board is assistive if people want to do that, and we will help point them in the right direction to the right contractors. You know, when you, in some ways, home solar can, is a bit of a fad in some minds, and as a result, there can be some rip-offs resulting in that, which is why we encourage our customers. And we certainly, you know, don't want people not to have solar. That's not all, even though if they put it on, we don't get to bill them for it, you know, run the meter backwards and all that. That's terrific. The more that we can help people do that, the better. But we certainly don't want people to get ripped off by unscrupulous contractors as well, so.
Is that something, maybe, you just got the idea, is that something that maybe the Board could be a little bit more, and maybe you are, I just haven't noticed it, proactive on finding ways to engage folks with scrupulous contractors?
Yeah, it's on our website, but, you know, that's a passive thing. You have to go there, and I appreciate, and I'll bring that back to management, that how can we be more aggressive on helping people do that? Yeah. The other thing, if I could just follow up on, the other thing, I think, I thought about this last night, when I think about how many of the citizens in Lansing use natural gas to heat their homes, how, what are we going to do with that as we, as a city and transportation, which is just a huge, huge carbon emitter? So, I mean, obviously, energy generation is big. Those two things are even bigger, and will need to be addressed if we're going to, as a region, attain carbon neutrality.
And you said the new Erickson Station's online?
I'm sorry?
The new gas plant at Erickson's online?
I'm sorry?
The new, the new gas plant is fully operational?
Yes, Delta is. We will probably have a ribbon-cutting grand opening as, this is supposed to be spring, but when it actually, Michigan spring arrives, we'll, everyone will be invited out for that, I'm sure.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions by council members? I have a few for you.
Okay.
Mr. Price, you've been in leadership for the Board for a number of years. What have you done as a leader dealing with training for the Board as an employer? You're an employer for your corporate secretary, for your internal auditor, dealing with sexual harassment or bullying. Can you explain what type of training you've done as a Board for those and how you've addressed issues that have come forward because of those?
I must say, we haven't done training on bullying. We have done training on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that was an extensive training that was done. Unfortunately, it wasn't able to be done in person because of COVID at the time, but all members of the Board attended that. It was conducted by an attorney from Detroit who reviewed our policies, and then was actually an incredible eye-opening experience, I think, for all the Board members.
So when there was a complaint that you were given dealing with sexual harassment, you did not look into or harassment, you did not look into any training?
I think we had to be careful because, as you suggested, the sexual harassment, we have three employees. The sexual harassment that was alleged was not against one of our employees. We do not have authority beyond that. We hire three, our three employees to carry out our duties, and that came under the general manager's authority.
No, the complaint I'm talking about that came from the corporate secretary back in September of 2020.
That was not sexual harassment, it was--
It was harassment.
And that's what led to the diversity, equity, and inclusion training.
So you've had none until then?
Correct.
And have you done anything about having a policy that you would have one annually or anything like that to make sure that the Commissioners are reminded on a regular basis how to conduct themselves?
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
I'm just a little bit saddened that it isn't something that you wouldn't have considered important enough to deal with on a regular basis.
It is important, it's critically important. I think sometimes when you go for a long time and not have anything, and when you only have one employee, or, I mean, sorry, three employees, it's a little different being a Board of Eight to be that collective employer. So I appreciate--
We're here.
I know.
We're an employee, you know, there's eight of us, and we have three employees, and we do an annual training, and have been doing it.
And I take that suggestion seriously, and I will run it by the Commissioners.
So your equity, diversity, and inclusion, is that something you're going to do on an annual basis?
I think so. We didn't commit to it, but it's, you know, we only have so many times that we can meet, and of course, none of my fellow Commissioners are paid, so it's difficult to get everybody on the same page to conduct those kinds of trainings.
I understand that you're not paid, but I think when you look at the fact that you oversee a multimillion-dollar business, and what happens at the top filters down, all the way down to the line person on the line, knowing that the people at the top are having this type of training and taking it seriously means that the people that are working on the line will also take the situation seriously.
I appreciate that.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. Actually, I'm wondering if you can speak to the preparation as far as protections against cyber attacks in regards to the Russia situation, saying that, you know, energy companies are a target for that?
Certainly. I'm not in a position to discuss it, but what I do know is that it is monitored all the time by our IT department, and indeed, we've been told that since the Ukrainian invasion, it has been ramped up dramatically many, many times daily, and we are constantly fighting that. It is, it is a high priority within the BWL, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Councilmember Spatafor.
I would move the, I would move the resolution reappointing David Price as an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light with the term expiring June 30th, 2026.
We have a motion before the Board. All those in favor say aye. Posed, nay. Yes.
I didn't want to say anything while you were undergoing the interview here, but I, the city attorney is responsible for legal affairs, including those of the Board of Water and Light. We have an assistant city attorney who is in-house at the Board of Water and Light. I have been attending the Committee of the Whole meetings and also the Board of Commissioners meetings, and have had a chance now to observe their activities and the debate. My finding, both the chair and the vice chair, run the Board in a very businesslike manner. I saw no evidence of stifling debate. There were heated debates, but they were resolved. There's an open discussion about many items at the Board, and there was nothing that leads me to be concerned or to report back to this council that there's an issue there. The Board has recently debated their rules of governance and their rules of procedure, and those are coming here for your review under the Charter. So I just wanted to pass that on, but I didn't want to say anything before you had your vote on the chair.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I guess, first of all, I think it would have been helpful if that information would have, would have been shared, but I guess I'm a little confused and concerned as to why we even need to know that. I mean, I, the question and the concern is about sexual harassment and, or harassment, and whether or not they've put proper policies and procedures in place. I heard nothing that said that they had done that at all, and so, you know, I, it was just a little, I was just a little surprised.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Price.
they had done that at all. And so, you know, I, it was just a little, I was just a little surprised.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. That takes us on to our next item, which is setting a public hearing for an ordinance amending Chapter 1300, Section 1300.7, 1300.10, 1300.11, medical marijuana. I believe we have the clerk, Mr. Fedewa, and I see Amanda, who is the guru on our medical marijuana ordinance. She can either move to the mayor's seat or to the clerk, to, you can, there's, there's one next to Brian that's open, and there's- Okay, it is my understanding that the amendment for the ordinance that we have in front of us came from the clerk's office. And so, with that, I would open it up to Chris Swope, our city clerk, to explain to us his recommendations for changes in the ordinance. You do have that in your packet, along with some maps to take a look at. And so, with that, I'll open it up. And after he has an explanation, if we could have Mr. Fedewa explain the zoning portion of it, and then we'll open it up for questions. Mr. Swope?
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate this, and it's timely that we're discussing this right now. We just got news at the end of last week from the state that we received a little bit over $900,000 in revenue sharing based on the number of provisioning centers that we had open as of September 30th of last year. So, as I've said before, you know, this is an industry that is providing improvements in city infrastructure, city buildings, as well as providing jobs for Lansing citizens, and revenue to the city, as well as the administrative expense of the licensing process is predominantly covered by the licensing fees. So, all in all, financial net benefit to the city. I did ask for this ordinance to be put together primarily because a little over a year ago, this body adopted a new zoning code that made all of the zoning categories that were allowable for marijuana non-existent anymore as there were no existing, all of the existing zoning classifications were erased and replaced with a whole different systems, system of zoning. So, we have started developing issues where we have businesses that, provisioning centers where they have discovered that their location isn't ideal and would like to move, and yet, because there's no zoning classification where they can move to, they're running into issues. We have been approached by several processors, and if you recall, processors are facilities that the city council decided not to put a limit on. But we've had, been approached by some that want to apply and can't apply because there's no zoning classification where they qualify. So, we did ask for this to be, for the marijuana ordinance to be updated to accommodate the form-based zoning code. And then, one other issue is all of our approvals were conditional upon them receiving state license and, as well as their final build-outs. And the ordinance didn't really have a mechanism. We, we have been successful in either pushing them along or getting them to forfeit their license, to revoke their license. But we did want to have it more clearly in the ordinance that if they do not get that licensure, that we have the ability to, to revoke their license based on that. So, you know, I hope you'll take a look at this. There, there are some issues that are going to be created where previous zoning classifications, the new zoning classification that replaced it doesn't exactly line up and based on, I'm, I'm not a zoning expert, that's why I'm here, but there are going to end up being some non-conforming, non-conforming previous existing uses based on what came out of the planning board. We also are going to have some situations where, for example, some grows in, some existing grows that also have co-located processors. The processor is non-conforming previous existing use, but there will be grows in the exact same zoning classifications that won't be able to add processors to that location. So, just a couple of things to note on the, on the zoning side of this issue. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Spitzley, I saw a question. Did you want to wait for Mr. Fedewa to explain the zoning portion of it, or do you want a question? Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of questions, and then I'll listen to the zoning. So, for the non-conforming uses, the potential, are they grandfathered in, or so they will be, they just can't expand? Is that what you're saying?
They, well, they can't add any different license types. So, if they have, if they're a grow, they, I believe, and Mr. Fedewa could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they could add additional grow licenses, but they couldn't add a processor license if that's not allowed in, in the current zone.
All right. And then, my last question before we start with the zoning is, will this, will this new ordinance result in increased availability of licenses for any category?
No.
No. The, the, the current ordinance caps the retail-type facilities at 28. We have 28 approved, caps the consumption facilities at four. We have four approved, although zero are operating. It caps the micro-businesses at four. All are approved and none are operating, although three of those would be in non-conforming prior existing uses, so able to continue in that space. And if you recall, the ordinance allowed 75 grow locations up until December 31st of 21, 2020. And then, that dropped down to 55. So, we are at maximum locations for grows and will not be adding any grows. We don't, there is, the ordinance does not have maximum on the processor locations or the secure transport or testing.
I appreciate that. I, I figured that was the answer, but if, I just, if I am asking the question, somebody out there is probably asking the same question, so I appreciate you.
But it, but it does, there are some that are finding their current space is not really working and would like to move an existing license of a provisioning center. And in fact, one of the ones that wants to move, they're right now, they're now in a non-conforming prior existing use, and they want to move out of that into something that would now meet the code. So, you know, we're just kind of at this crux of-
I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Just two, two questions. So, the non-conforming, I think Councilwoman Spitzley said it, but are any of those going to be within the 500 or 1,000-foot rule, as far as like churches or dejavus?
No, that was evaluated at the time. So, that, that hasn't changed, that wouldn't change. It's, it's just the fact that the zoning classification that they are, that where they are located and has been changed to would no longer allow the addition of their type of business.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the clarification on that. And now, my, my second question is, you said you have the four approved consumption sites. Are you able, are you at liberty to say where those are at?
Yes, they're on our website. We have a full list of all the approved locations on our website.
You mind, I mean, there's four. Do you mind telling, telling us on, on public record?
Yeah, I know it's one per ward. Jennifer's, and by the way, this is Jennifer Smith-Zandy, she's the licensing expert, so she's the one that reviews all these licenses.
So, I, I heard rumors a while ago, since I'm southeast, you know, ward representative of Ward Two, that potentially deja vu was one. And so, I, there's a lot of people asking me, so I'm just wondering if that is in fact one of them.
The second ward consumption facility is at 134 East Edgewood.
That's not-
The first ward is 415 Baker. The third ward is 6289 South Martin Luther King and 6289, 6289 South Martin Luther King.
That's in Oak and Edgewood.
That's at the intersection of Edgewood. And then, the fourth ward is 600 South Capital.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, Mr. Fedewa, if you would explain the difference between the form-based and, and the zoning that we currently, well, we're not currently under, we're under.
Yes. So, as Clerk Swope stated, there is not a one-to-one match between the old zoning and the new zoning. But by and large, if something was commercial, it is some type of commercial under the new code. And if it was industrial under the old code, it's industrial under the new code with just a different name. There are two things that I wanted to draw attention to, but before I say that, I want to say, I think Clerk Swope had it backward. If a, if a grow wanted to add a transport, they could do that as proposed. It would, it wouldn't just, wouldn't be true the other way around. If they were a transport and wanted to add a grow in DT2 as proposed, they wouldn't be able to do that. Grows are confined just to industrial as proposed. So, that's one thing. The second thing I wanted to mention was for grows, if I can change, bring your attention to that map, just says form-based code and marijuana grows. The old zoning, light industrial and heavy industrial are marked by gray and dark gray lines. You'll see a vast area east of the downtown core that was industrial, but it is now what we call DT2, urban flex. That was a conscious decision, recognizing that when the old code was written in 1983, the city was doing everything possible to keep industrial in the city, especially where it developed early in 20th century in the east of downtown. But recognizing that those industrial uses are gone for the most part, and they're not coming back, and we just haven't seen the interest, and that's why we see a lot of vacant parcels east of downtown. That's why we created that urban flex zone, DT2, to kind of shift from industrial to retail services, entertainment, more active urban uses. And footnote on that thought is, we see kind of, maybe not the best results of the grows that did move in, particularly on East Kalamazoo. These are the businesses that moved in, and they wanted barbed-wire fences, they blocked up windows, they didn't paint their building, they didn't really add any aesthetic components to their building. And I just don't, planning and zoning staff just didn't feel that that was proper for the, this downtown two zone. The second thing I wanted to mention goes to the provisioning centers and retailers map. That shows the commercial zoning of the former one. And I apologize, on my map, I did not label F and F1. That is commercial under the old zone, or zoning code. You'll see green outlines kind of on our urban, or excuse me, our corridor intersections, so along Mount Hope, Waverly, Miller, Cavanaugh. These kind of intersections were made MX1, which is a neighborhood-focused commercial district. And we made a conscious decision to not include that with this proposed code because we're really looking for those neighborhood-focused amenities and commercial and service businesses rather than a marijuana dispense, or excuse me, provisioning center or retailer. And so, that's why you're going to see outlined without a color inside it. So, those ones were left off.
And I, there was an answer given to this question when we were passing form-based code, but I don't remember why. So, why did we exclude updates to the marijuana ordinance when we passed through form-based code? Was that more of a political calculation or?
It was kind of a tactical decision to kind of separate them because there's a lot of unknowns or misinformation about the marijuana businesses, and we just kind of wanted to focus on the form-based code and updating this almost 40-year-old zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Patricia, or Councilmember Spitzley, I'm sorry.
It's fine, Madam Vice President. So, you talk about, I'm sorry, you talk about the two areas that you highlighted, and that you made a conscious decision not to include marijuana in those categories. Without your conscious decision, would they have met, would they have been, would they have met the qualifications to be in those categories?
I don't think so, based on, because this is an extension from the comprehensive master plan that did have community input and had a lot of public participation, that these kind of intersection nodes really wanted to focus on those neighborhood businesses. And with that in mind, and we discussed this with planning board as well, and they felt, they agreed with us that these kind of marijuana businesses didn't quite meet the, what we felt was a threshold for neighborhood businesses and services.
It sounds, it sounds subjective.
Understood. And this is a draft and a proposal from our planning and zoning staff. If city council feels differently-
I, I don't, it's not that I feel differently. I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand what the thought process is. And so, if someone wants to challenge it, I want to make sure that we have the best argument possible to justify the decision, and it sounds subjective.
Understood. In our force, form-based code, intents and purposes and allowable uses, they're more focused on neighborhood services like your local barber or laundromat or mom-and-pop grocery stores, that kind of focus.
Councilmember Spitzley, maybe your question is better asked to the attorney, Amanda Boyle, whether, when she reviewed this-
Yeah, yeah, I just want to-
Because Amanda's, you know, has been very good at-
I just want to make sure that we're able to withstand a challenge to that. If somebody, you know, if, if somebody chooses or would choose to challenge that designation and that reasoning, do we have, and I, and you know, I know that anybody can challenge anything. I get that, Amanda. But, you know, but you, you understand what I'm saying is that it just, to me, when I hear it, it just, it, it sounds like there's not, it sounds, it sounds subjective.
I'll, I'll start with the, the proposal. You'll need the microphone.
Yep. And make sure that, thank you.
I'll start with the, the proposal pending before the city council today is a one-for-one to the best of the ability that the city attorney could draft, understanding that many of the old zoning designations now have a few different types that are compatible. So, that is presented for your consideration. The recommendation from the planning board was to remove one subgroup, DT2, from the list of zoning designations as it related specifically to safety compliance, processors, and secure transport only. And that, from their perspective, they're looking long-term. The zoning code is an evolving subject, and the zoning administrator, part of her responsibilities is to say, where is our city evolving and moving towards? And it, her perspective is, we're moving away from industrial, we're moving more towards retail, service, industry, and that particular identified designation of DT2 is where they think that those transitional properties are located. So, it could be defensible- So it could be defensible to adopt it with that modification, understanding that one zoning designation doesn't mean, you don't have a guaranteed right that that's how your property is going to be zoned forever. There could be certainly legal challenges to that. I think from our perspective, the best option is to have something where you're not going to have a lot of licenses that fall into one-off spots where they're pre-existing nonconforming. We're trying to be cohesive in updating to form-based code. So that is what we, at the city clerk's request, tried to present to you guys.
All right, thank you, I'm done. But thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move the resolution setting the public hearing for ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 1300.07, .10, and .11, for the purposes of updating the ordinance to reflect the changes in law and rules resulting from the adoption of the form-based zoning code. And note that the hearing will be set for Monday, April 25th, 2020, five days late for the appropriate holiday. 2022, excuse me.
Okay, we have a motion before us and that is, again, according to the ordinance that is in your packet. With that, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is a closed session and I would recognize Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to MCL 15.268subE, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the City of Lansing concerning these cases. Settle down, everyone. Atkinson et al. v. City of Lansing et al. Burwell v. City of Lansing et al. Calkins Darling v. City of Lansing et al. Career Quest Learning Centers Inc. v. Little Rainbows LLC v. City of Lansing Treasuryer et al. Chen v. City of Lansing et al. City of Lansing v. OCOF Nonprofit Housing Corp. City of Lansing et al. v. Purdue Pharma et al. Fire Farm LLC v. City of Lansing. Freeman v. City of Lansing. Hardy v. City of Lansing et al. Hulan v. City of Lansing et al. Jackson &amp; Lansing Railroad Company v. City of Lansing. Joseph v. City of Lansing. Lynn v. City of Lansing. Lynn v. Mayor Shore et al. Michigan Basic Property Insurance Associates v. City of Lansing. New Residential Mortgage LLC v. Mao Chaulin et al. OPV Partners LLC and Resco LLC v. City of Lansing. Overstrom v. City of Lansing. Reed v. City of Lansing et al. Stafford v. Klein &amp; City of Lansing. Taylor v. City of Lansing et al. Williams v. City of Lansing. And finally, McLaren v. City of Lansing.
All right, we have a motion before us, is this a roll call vote? Swope?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
We are now in recess. We will be coming back after we are done and adjourning and then moving into our council meeting. We're calling to, back to order the committee of the whole. At this time, the committee of whole will be adjourning and in five minutes, we will start the council meeting. We are adjourned.